Row, Row, what did you watch? What movie did you see?
What movie?
Inside Out.
Sorry, I just wanted to record it. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, again, I wonder what the "do" would translate into actually. I would like to find that out. I can do all things, because I wonder if it would not translate differently. But my thought is, I mean,
Like maybe endure?
I said survive. I can survive and thrive, all things through Him who strengthens me, is to me. Or endure would be a good, I can endure all things through Him who strengthens me. That would make much more sense with the Scripture, with the context prior to that than "do" would, you know, to me. But, I don't know, I might have to do some research.
Well, the thing is, is you also, well, just a little side note, Paul was not a Greek, he was not a, what's the word that I'm trying to think of? He was not a good Greek speaker. It wasn't his native. He wasn't a native Greek speaker. He was,
Like fluent?
Right, he wasn't as fluent. Yeah, right. And so he, so he, that, I've read that they just, his grammar and his use of words sometimes isn't the, isn't the best. Just because he's writing in Greek and that's not his native language. So, I mean, it may just say, it may, this is a word-for-word translation, so it may say "do" because that's what Paul said, but he may not have had, you know, the now, the Greek knowledge to use another, but he uses endure and persevere in other areas, so I could be very wrong about that, but I don't know. Anyway.
That's just my interpretation.
Yeah, and it might be helpful to look at other interpretations and other versions to see, like more thought-for-thought versions to see, you know, how they translate it as well. Who knows? I mean, I think most that I've read, but I haven't read any of the newer, like the NLT or like other versions that have come out more recent, recently, I stick mostly to like NIV and this. But I'm not sure. But yeah, that was, that's good. That's good. Good thought. So I just wanted to share one little thing and then we'll wrap this up, because the last part is pretty self-explanatory. Just about this in my own life and this particular thing and kind of what Amy and Kristen were talking about, about it being like this formula of A plus B equals whatever you want God to do for you, because God can be manipulated by our own, you know, different, our own little formula or this magical plan thing, like God is a genie in a bottle and if you rub it right, you're gonna get what your wish is, which that's not who God is and that's not who He should be in our lives. Like that's not, that's not why we worship God, that's not why we serve God, that's not why we love God. And I think for me, that's what I thought that God was for a long time. It was like that God was, if I did this and this, that I was gonna get this from God. And it wasn't like, I want a new car, I want, you know, all these things. I just wanted to be normal. And I just wanted to be, like I just, yeah, and the dangerous thing about this is that it, it made loving God and serving God really difficult for me for a long time. And for me, this, this, this misinterpretation was not just like, it was not just like, oh, I don't get, I don't get to be, I don't know, I don't get this job or, well, it is essentially eventually in, in the grand scheme of things, but as like a seven-year-old, like, or eight-year-old or whatever, as a small elementary child, being filled with so much shame, because the expectation that I thought was set on me to be a certain way, to have enough faith, to be whatever, to do, to perform this or be this verse, and be able to do all things, like it was so devastating to my relationship with God and my identity as a person, as, as a believer. It was, it just can be very dangerous. And that's why I'm so, like, passionate about, about good interpretation of Scripture, because for me personally in my own life, like it, the misinterpretation of Scripture can have proved, had proven to me, or has proven to me, to be very detrimental to my life and, and my view of God and my view of myself. And by well-meaning Christians, people, but it just, it's not healthy and it, it doesn't serve a purpose, because the truth is, is that God is good regardless, regardless of whether or not you get the things that you want or can do, or the job, or the car, or the house, or the money, or whatever it is, you know, whatever, whatever it is that you, that you wanna do, even if you don't get that, that God is still worthy of worship. He still loves you just as much as He loves everybody else, regardless of whether or not you get what you want or need or, or whatever, what your requests are, just like Paul said earlier in that chapter, like that, that the peace that comes from God is, is, is better, is what you really need, no matter what. And the salvation is enough for me. And that, that is what the secret of being content, I think, really is. Because God took, where, God took our greatest pain, our greatest sickness, and that is our sin. And for me, I have to look at my life in, in context of this contentment that Paul is talking about, in the context of what Jesus did for me, and, and look at it and say, that is enough. If I get no, nothing else from God, material-wise, like anything, if, if, if I get nothing else from Him, salvation is enough for me.
Melinda?
Yeah.
I'm amazed at you. And I continue to be amazed by you as your aunt, and Gammie's saying the same thing back here, that, boy, there's no, there's no harder thing to go through than what you did. And you have just continued to, you know, march on. And we are so incredibly proud of you. And you're just walking in your gift, and I think you're just gonna continue to do that. You are gonna touch even more people, but you're touching this group right here and changing lives. And it doesn't mean you have to go to the masses, but little by little, your story. But we just want you to know that, and I know what you mean, because this has been detrimental to my son also. And I just continue to pray that he will know God someday and believe in Him again. Because it's that misinterpretation is what has done that for Chad. Because he felt inadequate in so many ways. And when he didn't get what he thought to be normal, like you said, or anything else, that cut off his tie in believing in God, because he just didn't know how that could add up. And it's, so what you're doing and bringing out real truth, the real truth is what changes lives. So thank you. Thank you for just continuing and hanging in there, because I'm telling you what, not everybody does. And I just love you and thank you for sharing all this with us. And thank you for being who you are, because you are special and, and you are gifted and extraordinary. So don't ever forget that.
My hope is that, like, I mean, I think we all hope that, that things will change. Like, I don't know how to, I don't know. I don't know the words that I wanna say, and I'm, and not even about me, just like, my heart, just like, it, it hurts for like, this thing, just because I know my own experience, just for the things that Chad has gone through and like, yeah, I don't, I just pray that he and hope that, like, somebody comes along that, that can show him God in a very different way that he hasn't seen. And I don't think that, nothing against any, anything that, you know, the people that love him have done, it's, it's not even that, it's just like, I think sometimes it takes like an hour, you know, like, I don't know. Yeah. Anyway, thank you for that, of words.
You know, I think of Justin being today is his birthday. And him having those same feelings of people saying, just, you know, you can do all things and you can just pray more and, you know, all that kind of stuff, when he never felt he was good enough either. And those people did the best that they knew. But again, it's this wrong interpretation of Scripture and it, and it's sad what it can do to people.
And that's why, just continuing what Mom was saying, that, that's why this is so important, just like Amy was saying too, is just that, as we, as you show us these things and how to understand and how to really know the truth for ourselves, that's how we, that's how we live it out, and that's how we make a difference for the people around us. And help them to authentically know God's love and the truth in a real way. That's real and it meets them right where they're at, for them to know that their love, no matter what, that God's with them, no matter what. You know, and that they don't have to be or do anything different for Him to, to love them or to love them more. And you know, it's because, Melinda, because of how you immersed yourself in Scripture and because of the passion God placed in your heart to pursue this, that Justin knew the love of Jesus in a real way. And we talked about that the other day, you know, about how, because of the way that you loved Him, you reflected God's heart to Him and helped Him know that He was loved, no matter what. And, and that, that is what it's all about, because when we look into this and let it become what's at the forefront of our hearts, that's what we reflect, and that's how people get to know Jesus. We are His hands and feet. This was the plan all along for us to be the ones. You know what I mean? To be able to know God through knowing what His Word says, through the truth, so that we can shine that light and we can be the love of Jesus. So people see that in themselves, that see, you know, that how He, how He loves in a real way, that's authentic, that's true, you know?
I think of that about Shelby too, and some of the situations that she's been in with some of the other Allen family, and not so much Allen's, but the other side of the family, and how she's been the one to stand up and say, we love no matter what. We love them no matter what they're going through or no matter, you know, we don't condemn them, we love them through things, you know? I know that she's had to do that a lot with that side of the family of, and you know, it's just, it is, that's what shines God's true light and true love.
I just wanna end, because I'm just like, how do I even move on from this? I mean, we don't have,
Y'all just freaking amaze me. That's all I'm gonna say. Y'all just amaze me. I don't know what more Mom could ask.
Gammie says that's what she's saying too, because she's right behind me, listening to all this. She's agreeing with what Renee just said, that you're all of you, you've all had your struggles. We've all had our struggles. But you guys have come through amazingly, and it's also because you have a wonderful mother and father. And we all have a great heritage in Gammie and Papa that started it all, you know, so.
That's what I was just gonna say, Amy. It all has stemmed from, from Gammie and Papa and just how they have shown us love forever and welcomed others with open arms. And Mom and Dad, you have showed us that more than anybody else. And you have welcomed so many good and bad into our lives and just welcomed them and loved them, even if it wasn't right for us, you still showed them love. And you guys are just really incredible. So thank you so much for that.
I'm a blubbering idiot. Thank you, Mel, for really, I mean, I knew how this was gonna end, because I've been through this, and it's just so good. I just, it's so good. It's just, it's life-changing. It is life-changing. Hi, Decker.
Yeah, it is good. So I'm just gonna, I mean, I, this is good and it feels like, I don't know how to say, it feels like God is here. Do you feel that? Does anybody else feel that kind of like, you know, that like sweet spot of like God's, I just feel it here, like I, even though we're not even together-together, like I can just, I feel that. And I, part of me is like, I just wanna sit right here. But I wanna finish, so that we can, so that we can move on to, you know, other things too. But yeah, I'm, I agree with what Shelby said. I'm very, and Amy, like I'm, I'm, without getting like super crazy emotional, because that is me. But I, I'm so thankful, like, like Shelby said, that we, we have, you know, these great examples of love, and I think that despite all things that, that could have led us in other paths, that we, that it was that, like, foundation of loving people, accepting people, and being loved and accepted, that like, I think that really that's, that's a lot of the reason that I still follow God today, that I still love God, is because of that, is that foundation of knowing that I was always loved and that people were always loved and people were the most important thing, regardless of their past. That, you know, like Mom and Dad, you've always seen the good in people. And the good in us too. And, and I know for me, like, I've made a lot of bad choices and done a lot of dumb stuff, and you've never turned your back on me, like you've never, and that is a testament of the love of Jesus, more than anything, obviously. Look at, I mean, not that the three of us are so great, but I'm just saying, look at, look at the, the perseverance in, in us, you know, and I think of Shelby and like, how pretty much on your own, I mean, with your husband, but on your own, like you found a church that you love and you got involved and you take your kids and, and, and I think that that's so commendable and so amazing and you're involved. And, and I'd love to watch that in you, that, that hunger for God and that commitment to, to raising your family and that Godly environment and being in Bible study and watching you guys do that, and you joining the worship team and, and doing that on Easter is so, so amazing. And, you know, like, and Kristen, all the things that you do with your church and, and just like your perseverance, you know, in the last few years and, and really immersing yourself in, in Scripture and getting really involved in, in small groups and churches and, and, and like just surrounding yourself with, with truth and, and look what, look what it did. I mean, I'm not saying there's a formula, but look what it brought, look what you got out of that. Yeah. Anyway, Amy, you're great too.
You don't have to get, it's all good. But I was just gonna say, I feel like we're doing a cup of blessing. Does anybody else feel that way? Which is good. I love that. Do you feel like we're doing a cup of blessing?
See the good. That's great.
Oh, Mom says she doesn't feel like we're doing a cup of blessing, but she said it's all good stuff.
Well, great.
She's like, not quite, didn't make the cut. Not, not cup of blessing caliber here. Okay, you need to, you need to ratchet up a little bit. Not quite.
There needs to be more crying.
More crying, yes. Uncontrollable bawling. That's how I always felt. That's why I never, not never wanted to do it, but I always would get so anxious. It's not because I didn't wanna say anything, but it's like, I know I'm gonna be a blubbering idiot, please don't give me the cup. Oh, man. There's this one that is one of my favorite cup of blessing memory, because it was when we were at our old house on Cherry Circle, and it was one of the first times the kids, us, could be involved. Maybe the older ones, us, were before, but the little kids, so like Shelby, Chad, Brock, were involved. And I remember it was Chad's turn, and he took, he didn't, he took it, he said something, you know, like a big, for my family and my brother, my video games or something. And he went to pass the cup, he drank, he went to pass the cup, he's like, hey, I want that back, that's good. Can I have some more of that? Hilarious. Oh, man.
Let's, uh, let's call it, let's wrap this up with the book.
Oh, yeah. Sorry for the tangents, guys.
No, no, I don't mean that. It's awesome. I mean, let's just, is, is there a way we can?
Well, this is the end. And this is just about, let's just say, let me look at my notes real fast. So, so he talks about them and they're in fourteen through the end of this kind of twenty here. He talks about, it was kind of you to share in my, in my trouble. He, they were the only one that partnered with him in the gospel in the beginning. They sent help when he was in, in Thessalonica, once and again, multiple times apparently. Then he says, now that I seek the gift, but I seek the fruit that increases to your credit.
I think that's interesting right there, just really quickly, just to, that he's, it's interesting what this tells us about giving, right? It's like, he's saying, like, I don't, I'm not, it's not that I seek, it, it's actually interesting what it does for us when we give, is kind of what he's saying a little bit, like, you know what I mean? Like, it's not that he's seeking the gift of like, whatever it is that they're giving to him, but he seeks the fruit that increases to their credit, like, like also like the fruit that comes from like giving too, right?
Right, but I, yes. But I think this also can be misinterpreted. What is the fruit that increases to your credit? Is it more giving or more blessing? I don't think so. I think it's, it's, it's like a, well, how would you explain it? What, I mean, what, what would your word be, word choice?
I think, I think it's like, when we think about the fruit, right, we can go back to, well, this makes me cross-reference and think about what we, what we should think of as fruit, right? Is the fruit of the Spirit, or things like that, that's what I connect to it here, is like, you know, the fruit that increases for them, when they, when they're helping Him in this partnership in the gospel, is like, what does it do for us in our, in our hearts? This isn't about fruit, like people will try to, another mis- misinterpretation of like, given, it will be given back to you, pressed down, shaken together, you know, whatever. It's like, the fruit here is the joy that comes from giving, is all of the fruit of the Spirit that it's like, what it does in our hearts when we are, when we're generous, when we're giving, whether that's, you know, they're sending somebody, you know, it's, that's just like, that's what I think of, because it's like, you know, and then what happens? What's the fruit that increases also to their credit? Is like, when we're filled up, it's like this, it's like this very connected thing, right? At least this is what it makes me think of. When they're giving to be partners with Him, when they're giving, and then that increases joy in their hearts and, and, you know, all of these other things, then what happens? They're shining as brighter lights because of what they're filled up with, right? And so that increases the fruit of the gospel, because they're, you know what I, you see what I mean? Like, that's how I see it as connected. You know what I mean?
Right, or it could even mean, I'm not saying you're wrong, by any means, I don't know for sure, but the fruit could be even souls, like salvation, because it's like, they're helping Him and then they're helping Him, He's able to spread the gospel. And so it's, it's not just fruit to Him, but it's fruit to their credit, because look at what they're doing to partner with Him and in that partnership, it's creating the gospel even further, which is great. I mean, either way, I mean, I don't think we have like a clear, clear like, but I think it's not monetary, it's not, I don't, it doesn't seem like anything that Paul is saying, and that's, that's the thing, within context, Paul is saying nothing about money. He's saying almost the opposite of that. And so it's like, so that doesn't make sense to take that verse out and make it apply to these like, you know, God's gonna make you rich if you give to Me, because it increases to your credit type of thing. That doesn't make sense.
Well, I think that's, you could use the example of people that are helping missionaries or, you know, those same things, it's, it's, when you, when you help them, whether it's financially or with whatever needs that they have, that you're a part of that, you're, you're a part of that ministry. You're a part of them helping, you know, save the lost, or whatever that case may be. It's the same thing.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Good, good stuff. So then in verse eighteen, "I have received full payment and more. I am well supplied, having received from Epaphroditus the gifts you sent, a fragrant offering, a sacrifice acceptable and pleasing to God." So, to me, this connects back to what we talked about at the beginning today, where we talked, or a little while ago, where he said, "You have revived your concern for me. It gives me great joy." You didn't have an opportunity and, and now you do at length. I think he's talking about Epaphroditus being that gift or that opportunity to, to give to Him. So we can see that gift, giving doesn't always have anything to do with money. It doesn't have to be money. It can be our time, it can, they gave a person, like, you know what I mean?
We're not gonna give people.
But, you know, like churches and missionaries or stuff like that. To different places or, you know, that kind of stuff. So I think that that's a fragrant offering, acceptable and pleasing to God. That, there's like, the fragrant offering goes back to like, probably Leviticus and offerings and, and stuff like that. I don't know specifically, I didn't look it up, but I'm sure it has something to do with that. It's not, it's not like, it's not literal, he's not saying they sent him something that smelled good. He, he mentions a fragrant offering in another, I think in First Corinthians two, which, if you wanna cross-reference that, I guess I can look up that later. Then in nineteen, and my, this is another big one, "And my God will supply every need of yours according to His riches in glory in Christ Jesus." For God be glory, for God and Father be glory forever and ever. Amen. What does it mean in the context of this letter, verse nineteen? Let's just go over that, then, then pretty much done. Context of nineteen.
Well, I think it's going to the, I mean, it's going back to the same thing. We're talking about needs and that, you know, and, and honestly, like, according to His riches and glory, like, what are the riches? You know what I mean? His riches, like, and I could be wrong, I'm just saying what I think of, when I think of, you know, the riches, it's not physical riches, it's not material things, it's, it's the peace of God filling us up, it's the joy filling us up. This is, these are the riches in Christ, you know, this is what makes us rich and, you know, rich and, you know, filled up and all of this is, are those things that we, you know, that well surpass like anything that could be material.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think some, I think maybe it could even be the emphasis, it could maybe the emphasis be on the who. And my God will supply, and God, God will supply you. You know, like it's not this like self-sufficient like thing either. It's like God's gonna, God's gonna give you what you need because he's the one who does. Like, you can trust him that he's gonna, you know, goes back to the not be, not being anxious and all that stuff. It just connects to that. I think that we can, we can eliminate, safely, correctly eliminate like this, the idea that this is about getting things.
Well, I think it's, it talks about a need and not a greed. God doesn't give us what we, you know? And, and if you look back to the needs are, are daily, again, our daily needs. That's more along that it's pertaining to not our, our greeds and our wants, but our needs. There's a big difference.
Right. Yeah. So that's pretty much the end. He ends with the greetings in twenty-one and twenty-two, which is typical of a letter in these days. Greet every saint in Christ Jesus. The brothers who are with me greet you. All the saints greet you. Especially those of Caesar's household. So there's a name drop for them because you know, they're, they're Roman citizens. They're very into Caesar and all that. So so he knows them and he, he, he mentions them. And he had mentioned them before as, as far as like the Imperial Guard and, and all that being, being saved or knowing that they, he was there for Christ imprisoned. So that kind of connects back to that. Then the end, the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ be with your spirit. And that is, that is Philippians, guys. That is Philippians. We are done. We are done with that. We are not, however, fully done yet today. I mean, we are, but I just want to say, I just want to talk about one thing and then, then you can go. I mean, you really can go whenever you want because you can just shut off your computer and be done. But so today we've talked about a lot of things. We, you know, good stuff. And instead of asking for a general response now because we've gone way over, I was, I was feeling good at ten fifty-five. I was like, man, we're almost done. And then that whole deal that took a long time. Sorry. But it was really good. It filled me up. So I felt good about it. So this is, this is for Thursday, if that works for everybody here. This is gonna be short, I promise. I promise short because there's not a lot. It depends on how, how, you know, much we talk about things. Anyway, you, it'll make sense in a minute. So for Thursday, I'm going to ask that you meditate on all that Paul has said here in the letter. And, you know, meditate on, on the things that you've learned and the interpretations and all of that and the timeless truths and stuff. And for Thursday, write out a final response. So don't make that face. Like a journaling type thing or whatever, something that like, a big takeaway for you after studying this book. What has encouraged or challenged you the most? So we'll share those with each other on Thursday. And then if you're sticking around for Ephesians, which I think you guys are, we'll talk about that. Though we did talk about it already this morning. About kind of like doing that on Sunday. And we'll talk about, I think if that's, if it's okay, we'll just transition Thursday after the Philippians will transition into like what, what Ephesians will look like for the first time kind of deal. Is that good? Do, do we want to take a break? Or are we gonna, I feel like if we take a break, then we won't come back. That's happened to me many times before. Where you take a break and then you're like, whatever. And then nobody comes back. So any thoughts? Thoughts, 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 questions before Thursday?
Nope, sounds good.
Good. How was today, today good? Everybody good?
No, it was horrible. Of course it was good.
Sorry, Amy. You were like, I can go a little bit over eleven, but I need to go. And it's almost, man, shoot.
There was no way I could get off. Like, it's worth it. So no big deal. Glad, glad to be a part.
Good. It's good to have you. Yeah. Do a prayer. And be, be done for the day. Who wants to pray?
Gammie wanted to say something. Is that okay? Real quick, guys?
I'm fine with that. We have two minutes, but go ahead.
We have two minutes.
I just want to say.
Maybe you should pray.
As a mom and a grandma, I can't tell you how that blessed me today. Just listening to the wisdom that's come out of your mouths and it's just been wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that. I would ask if you'd, I don't know if you did this before.
Go ahead, mom.
If you would pray for my family. We're all family, you know?
Yeah.
And I know they're hurting so bad and they have different, different places. There are emotionally and spiritually. But they need your love and they need your prayers. So thank you. Melinda, you're awesome.
Thanks, Gammie. So are you.
Okay, I'll let you close in prayer.
Who's praying? Mom, you pray fast. We got one minute. Speed prayer.
All right. Father, we just thank you for this incredible time today. Oh, I'm, am I muted? No. Thank you, God, for your word that just enlightens us and brings us peace and joy and just trust. It's just amazing. God, I thank you that you have given us this opportunity. And we, we at this time raise up the Julik family and Madigans and all of the family. God, we pray for peace and strength during this difficult time for them, God. And we just pray that they find you in a new way, God, that they reach out to you and that you're their help in a time of need. We thank you so much. God, for your goodness, your mercy and your grace. We love you so much. In Jesus's name. Amen. Was that fast enough?
Yeah, that was good. Is anybody getting back on or are we done, done, done?